The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody to our town council meeting on November 27th. Call the meeting to order and rise with your pledges allegiance please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Janet O'Fallon Kesten.
Here.
Councilor Giannoni.
Here.
Mayor Fertensky.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Paffiero.
Here.
Councilor Kanesa.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
May I have a form?
Thank you. You okay there?
Okay.
Voice is fading on here already?
I have a touchy voice.
All right, that's okay. Well, we look forward to it. Now we have our audience of citizens next. If anyone wishes to address the council, now would be your time.
I do. I know the mayor just cringed, but that's okay.
Never.
I know, I know. I'm just making a joke. Sam LaMaglio, 70 at Hickory Hill Road. I just got a couple of things I wanted to clarify from my last time I was here. About two weeks ago, I came to the council in good faith to propose a activity called the Winter Festival. And also, in good faith, I came here and asked the members that come to the Board of Finance this year to consolidate an idea for, that some of people have been campaigning for. As I stated in my presentation, when I was at the polls, many of people spoke with me and said that the town government was bloated with excess. And the Republican chairperson has told people in town that the majority council has a plan to consolidate departments, save taxes. And so I'm just, I'm hoping that, you know, we could clarify that and people come to the meeting and understand that. But nobody so far has accepted my invitation. And so I was just hoping that people will come here and accept it. But what concerns me is that when I did the winter festival proposal, Mr. Mayor, someone asked you at a location, asked you what you think about the winter festival that I floated the idea. And you clearly stated that it was wrong messenger that delivered it. Well, it shouldn't matter who the messenger, but rather that it's a good opportunity to bring people together in our community so we could showcase the golf course, showcase the restaurant. And I was hoping that perhaps you can instruct the town manager, the council, to start working on it because I know I talked to the golf course commission and they're all excited about it and they're all going to vote on it. They had to cancel the meeting because of snow, but they will vote on this. So I hope we could work that. Then what also was I concerned at the meeting that after I left, some people were wondering or criticizing me. So I just want to clarify, Alex, I do not, I don't hate you. I used you as an example, Alex, for consolidation piece because your party chair, Alex, always throws your name out in articles and said you're the king of consolidation. So, you know, you could check the archives, you could check the newspapers, that's what she did. So I came here and then I asked you a question. Alex, it doesn't matter if we disagree politically. What matters is we've got to think about what's good for the community. And Brendan, when I left the meeting, you came up with a letter dated back in 2014 in regard into consolidation plan for the town departments. First of all, Alex, I mean Brendan, I didn't get that email. Second of all, you've been in power for three years. That letter dated in 2014, you should have, if you thought it was really good, Alex, I mean Brendan, you should have put it in. You should have done it.
He hates me, I told you.
And you didn't, Alex. You didn't, Brendan. Okay, I don't hate you, Alex. You didn't, Brendan, okay? So, and you didn't even share with the Board of Finance. So, you know, and I looked at that letter 2014 and you wanted to consolidate the IT department, not you, I mean the people in the council. I hope people understand to consolidate the IT department with the Board of Education, it would cost money because we have to put our IT department to current levels. And right now, we're not. We need to hire an IT manager. And I looked at Indeed, starting salary, three to five years, $80,000 to $100,000 a year. So, you know, before we start thinking about consolidating IT department with Board of Education, we've got to start thinking about what it's going to cost. Also, Brendan, you sent us an email on the consolidation plan in Trumbull and I thank you for it. And I've read it, all 80 pages, and I analyzed it. And it's exactly what I thought. You have to spend money to consolidate. And in that thing, that thing at Trumbull, the guy that did the analysis said it's going to take around five to 10 years to see a savings. So if we want to consolidate the finance department with the Board of Education, that's great, but we've got to hire staff. And in order to hire staff, we have to spend money. So consolidation sounds really great, but I don't think it's going to work for the town of Berlin. Also, I read and I talked to the Kensington superintendent for the fire district and I read in the newspaper that, and he told me that the majority party wants to merge the Wetherton Ridge and the Kensington Water District. Well, you know, I just want to let you know, I don't think that's going to happen because those are two independent districts. What I do think would be a good idea, since we're having a 33% increase on the water rate in the Berlin Water District, which is technically a tax increase for over 1,000 people, that I think maybe the Berlin Town Council should think about having the Kensington Water District take over the Berlin. Because I think they do a better job in managing it than to keep it out of the town business. I think Kensington Water District runs an excellent operation. The water rates are low, they charge one mil, they've been charging one mil for years. And they've been keeping up to date with the pipes and everything. I talked to him and he said that they would consider, if the town would consider offering them the Berlin District, they would take it. That's what he told me yesterday on the phone. So I hope you can think about that. And I, and, you know, Brendan, I commend you on trying to do that consolidation with Talon. And if you really want to do consolidation, I talked to some of my members on the Board of Finance, we would consider budgeting a company to come in and do a study and tell us what we can consolidate. And maybe we could figure out what it's going to cost.
Is that how the discussion gets started? Isn't that how the discussion gets started?
Yeah, I commend you on that. But I'm just saying, but that 2014 letter, you know, some of it just didn't make any sense. I mean, thank you.
And I guess the golf course plan, just to clear it up, Mr. Chair, the golf commission hasn't even voted on it yet, correct?
But they will be.
I understand that. But I think my comments, wherever you heard these comments, were let the golf commission vote on it and then come see the council. Because it's coming from the golf commission, correct? You're not a member of the golf commission?
No, no. Okay. So I just, that was the comment, so perhaps taken out of context, I understand.
But the comment I made was to a member of the golf commission. I said, yeah, come see us, you know.
Well, he didn't take it that way.
We heard about it. Well, that's fine. People take things differently. I understand that. But, and about the consolidation, since we're here talking about it, I would hope that the Board of Finance would have some thoughts on it, seeing as how that's what you are tasked to do, is look at our town finances from year to year. And you would be studying that on your own. I mean, we certainly will have, you know, we certainly would be happy to discuss it with you and give us our recommendations, but it would be nice to see if you come up with some type of thoughts too.
In order to do that, Mr. Mayor, we just have to have the council put in a plan to give us appropriation for some money because we would love to hire.
Sam, excuse me, you have to be on mic. Thank you.
I'm sorry. In order to do that, Mike, Mr. Mayor, we would love to do that and we had talked about that, but we would need the council to appropriate some monies and we would love to hire a consultant to come in and do an in-depth study on what overlaps from the Board of Education to the town. And perhaps we could consolidate and they could do an overall study on everything in the town. So for the Board of Finance to just randomly say, well, let's consolidate this and let's consolidate that, we couldn't do that. But we would hire, we would think about hiring a consultant and I think Talon, I think, I mean Trumbull, I called them up and at the time it was around $10,000 they did it. So, you know, if the council would send appropriation to Board of Finance for $10,000, $20,000, we would find the money and we would hire a consultant because the Board of Education did that. They hired a consultant and I, to look at their schools and what they can do and we can do the same thing. And perhaps we could hire the same consultant that Trumbull had. And who knows? I mean, but my point is, I'm not ridiculing, but my point is that, and I know one time you said your party chair's not an elected official, but she walks around like she's an elected official. It really bothers us on the Board of Finance. Hold on, Mr. Mayor. It really bothers us on the Board of Finance.
No, 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 that's not.
Because she's constantly talking about consolidation. And she's constantly talking about all the things that the Board of Finance is wrong. And so she's always constantly out there and she's not an elected official. So she doesn't, she's not the mayor, she's not the council, she's not the Board. That's our point. We want to do our job and if we could work together with the Board of Finance, with the council and get a professional out there, then let's hire a professional. We're ready. We got, we have the votes. We're ready to do it. If you have the votes, then let's just do it. Let's hire a consultant. Might take a year, but God, we might be able to save some money for the town and do some tax relief for that. Now that I'm up here, I've got another idea that we talked about on the Board of Finance and since we're going to be discussing it. We want to give all seniors in town of Berlin, at 70 years old, we want to freeze their taxes.
Already working on that plan, Sam.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter what their income is. And we're figuring out a way where we could absorb the money. That's what we want to do. So we're going to be talking about that next board and then we're going to float the idea with the council. We have somebody working on it right now to figure out how we can do that and recoup the money. We figure we need to recoup around $750,000.
Oh, great.
That's what we figured.
Can we agree on one thing?
Yes, we could agree on everything.
Possibly.
Maybe.
Private citizens can say what they want to say. Last time I checked, that there was some freedoms of speech in our country.
But she's not a private citizen. She's a chair and she's a.
She's not an elected official, whatever her position is in the private sector and not.
Well, then maybe you should call her up in Florida and let her know that she's not the mayor.
No, that's not my position to stop private citizens from speaking, whoever they are, wherever they come from.
Okay, okay. We could agree to disagree then.
Let's just move on to town business.
All right, so think about.
Wasting valuable time.
Think about hiring a consultant.
Well, let me ask you something. The Board of Finance, again, I thought the reason why we went with the Board of Finance was, as I think I heard at one of your meetings, 150 years of financial experience between all of you?
At least.
And, you know, I know Jerry Paradise, you know, has quite a background in looking at towns. So you're telling me that we need a consultant?
No.
We need one down the road. Can I finish, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That with all his experience and your experience and Mark Holmes' experience and everyone, Sal's experience, president of a major helicopter manufacturer, you guys, you can't look at the departments in this town and look at their finances and come up with some type of plan before we have to hire a $70,000 a year consultant?
Well, we could, Mr. Mayor, but we don't think we could agree with you on that. Because in order to do that, because we do have ideas, like we said, the IT department.
Wait, wait, wait. So wait a minute. Can you try? So maybe.
Well, okay, let me ask you a question, Mayor. Would you consider hiring an IT manager when you consolidate the two IT departments? IT departments and upgrade? Would you support that in the budget?
I'm not considering anything. I'm asking to begin the discussion and I'm asking with your years of experience as a Board of Finance in the private sector.
We feel that it'd be more important.
And in the government sector, that perhaps you can come up with some initial thoughts.
We have thoughts with initial thoughts.
Well, share them with the council.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't think you'd hear us. That's the problem.
Of course I would hear you.
Oh, you wouldn't.
Are we not listening tonight, Jim?
Mr. Mayor, because.
Would you hear us?
Yeah.
Would you come and listen?
Of course, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You would have to, in order to do a consolidation plan in the town of Berlin, you would have to spend money. And I don't think you're ready to spend the money to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, could you present us some type of informal plan that you've already discussed, perhaps?
We could send you a plan, but we know you're not going to support. We, Mr. Mayor.
How do you know? I'm one person on the council.
Because, Mr. Mayor, during the budget process, we sent you a plan to move the town forward on the capital items. You didn't support it. So you're going to support hiring an IT manager. You're going to support hiring a few people in the finance department, Mr. Mayor. We're not going to agree. So the best thing to do is hire a consultant like the Board of Education did, have an independent company come in and tell us what we can do so that both boards could look at the independent. That's the right thing to do. Because in order to, in order to look at the town, that's a full-time job. We can give you some, you know, ideas, but in order to do a consolidation plan to save money, you need somebody to come in town and actually go from department to department to do an in-depth research, like they did at the Board of Education. They had this consultant company come in for a year and they went to every classroom, they talked to every teacher, they talked to superintendent, they talked to the principal, and they came down with a plan to consolidate schools or whatever. They came out with a plan for the Board of Finance to do that. We were not, we can't do an in-depth study that you would want and either could you do an in-depth study because all of us work for a living.
Can I ask you, I'm a little bit confused with the purpose of the Board of Finance. I guess we'll disagree.
No, it's not confusing.
Yeah, it is because.
No, it isn't.
That's what, as far as I know.
No, the Board of Finance will throw out ideas.
I went for the charter change. The Board of Finance was to be really the financial arm of.
Yeah, and we are the financial arm of the town. And I think we've done a wonderful job.
And to look at our budget. So I just don't understand why you have.
Because, Mr. Mayor, in order to do an in-depth, an in-depth study of the town, you need to get a consultant firm to come in to do a professional study. Or you can disagree on the duties of the Board of Finance, but the fact is, the Board of Finance does not have the equipment to do an in-depth study and cannot have the time to come here to talk to every department head and do a study.
You mean once a month?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we're talking about, you know what, obviously, I think you should call the town of Trumbull and ask them how long it took to do this study. I think it took about a.
I'm not saying it's going to take.
Okay, it's just going to take a year and a half.
Of course.
Okay.
We've got to start somewhere, right?
Well, I think we gave you a budget last year to start with the consolidation. I think we talked about consolidation last year and you didn't, you didn't even want to hear it.
You just wanted a budget. You just want a.
No, no. Well, Mr. Mayor, in order to.
You have a plan?
Of course we have a plan.
Where is the plan?
We told you. Where's your plan?
You're the Board of Finance, Sam.
Mr. Mayor.
Kind of a reverse.
We're ready to consolidate the IT department with the Board of Education. We had a number of discussions with the superintendent of schools. Superintendent of schools stated that he would consolidate with us. But in order to do that, Mr. Mayor, we would have to upgrade our whole system. In order to do that, Mr. Mayor, we would have to hire an IT department, an IT manager. Are you ready to spend the money? If you're ready to spend the money, we will send you a proposal and we can make a deal with the Board of Education to consolidate them. But you can't just say you consolidate a department without upgrading the system and without hiring an IT, an official IT manager to manage the whole thing. You just can't do that. So if you're willing to say you're going to approve that in the budget with your final approval, we'll give you a plan, Mr. Mayor, but you've got to be prepared to spend well over a few hundred thousand dollars. And I don't think you're prepared to do that. So the best thing to do is to get a consultant.
How do you know what the council's prepared to do?
Mr. Mayor, based on last year's reaction.
It doesn't matter based on last year's. We need a plan before we can discuss what to appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, based on last year's budget process.
Now, you have the, you have the cart before the horse, I guess.
No, I don't think so. I think, I don't think so, Mr. Mayor.
You need to give us some type of plan, Sam, so we can.
I don't think so. We're giving you a plan right now. Do you want to consolidate?
You have it in writing? Or is this just a verbal plan off the top of your head? Well, they're.
No, no, it's not a verbal plan. We've talked about it.
You have it in writing? That you could send to the council?
Yeah, we can send it.
Send it to the entire council?
Yeah, we don't have a problem doing that.
You could send it this week?
We're going to meet on the 13th and we'll send it to you.
Okay. Well, why do you wait till the 13th if you have a plan already?
Mr. Mayor, this is a plan between a few of us. We need to take.
So it's a verbal plan? Is it a verbal plan or a written plan? No, no, what is it? I mean.
Mr. Mayor, you know, don't be sarcastic.
Is it, no, is it a written plan, Sam?
Mr. Mayor, you're being sarcastic.
I'm not. I'm asking you a question. Can you be honest with me?
No, it's a verbal plan by certain members of the Board of Finance because we have studied. But you're being sarcastic, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are. You're being sarcastic.
Okay, Sam, you know what?
No, no.
That's enough.
No, no, you're being sarcastic.
No, I'm not.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This is typical of the mayor to show people.
Thank you, Sam. Okay. Oh, my Lord. Look, I apologize for this, but it just, it goes round and round. And unfortunately, you can see, nothing gets done. Okay, let's move on to our public hearing. Our consent agenda first, please.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda in front of us tonight.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? So. Okay, tonight we have a, we have a public meeting, a public hearing. Call that public hearing to order. We'll be at, we're all in town, all council chambers, Tuesday, November 27, 2:00 AM, 7 o'clock, with the purpose of holding a public hearing on the following. So if you want to read that, Kate, the notice?
Be ordained by the town council that we hereby authorize execution of the contract to lease golf equipment from Turf Products Corporation of Enfield, Connecticut using Shoreswell bid contract number 129829, the amount not to exceed $18,113, which includes a $250 documentation fee for the first year of a five-year lease, the amount not to exceed $17,803 per year for the remaining four years of the lease, for a total for the five-year lease term not to exceed $89,565.
Thank you. So now this is the public part of the hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to speak on this proposal, now would be your time. Hearing none. I will close the public portion of the meeting. And if the council has any comments? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the council comments and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And it is, we will take a vote on that shortly in our agenda. So we will now move on to topic number one.
Topic number, there we go. Topic number one tonight is, we have another Eagle Scout project for your approval.
Right.
It has gone to the Conservation Commission and Mark Kozakowski is here, representative planning zoning department. They've reviewed the application and also have the Eagle Scout, Brent Catton here also to discuss the project. So if you will, Mark.
Mark is going to go first. Who wants to go first?
I'm Mark Kozakowski, town planner. So Brent has an Eagle Scout project. He wants to build a footbridge and a trail connected through by Centennial Park and across Hatchery Brook. The Conservation Commission loved the idea and they doorenced it November 13. We are going to hopefully meet with Brent along with Jim Horrible to discuss some impacts on wetlands as well as the building official to make sure that the bridge plans, what you have in your packages today are sufficient for public health and safety.
Great. Thanks.
Brent, go ahead.
You're on.
Please identify yourself for the mic.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Hello, my name is Brent Catton. I'm a life scout with Troop 256. That's the rank before eagle. As Mr. Kozakowski said, my plan is to build a trail between Bicentennial Park and Hatchery Brook and then a bridge over the brook as part of the trail. I have a map here, GPS tracking of me walking the trail. I have that same map overlaid on a town map of property lines to kind of give some context to it. I have plans for the bridge, which include a bill of materials. The bill came out to $820. The bridge will be 20 feet long to span the brook. Did I pass this around?
Yeah.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, I grabbed the.
All right. We were trying to be prepared, Brent.
The trail is roughly a half mile long, sorry, no. Yes, a half mile long in one direction. Trying to remember which way I counted it. Yes, that's all I have to say.
So Brent, why did you decide to make this your project? Was there a certain interest that you have or?
Well, I was actually, my aunt was talking to Mr. Jim Mahoney and he mentioned that this was something the town might want to do. And she thought it would be a good project for scouts and she told me. And since I was, you know, just finishing up my life scout at the time and was looking for an eagle project to start, I thought it would be a good idea. And I know, you know, with my scout troop, I go on a lot of hikes and we've used, you know, scout trails that other boy scouts have built. So I figured this time my troop did one.
How long do you think it'll take to build from beginning to end?
Well, let's put it this way, I have until I'm 18 and I turn 18 on July 4th.
Noted. Brent, I just have to say, knowing your grandma and grandpa Catton the way I did, as they were like second parents to me, I know they're smiling down at you from heaven and they are so proud of you. Great, great, great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a great project and I'm glad to see our open space that we have such a big investment in being more utilized. This will help a lot. Has there been any issue with building the bridge? Every time I get involved in building a bridge, there's all kinds of wetlands and state agencies you have to jump through. Has that been cleared already?
Well, as was mentioned, I've been through Conservation Commission already. I meet with, in wetlands next week, on Tuesday.
You do need.
So I do need their approval, yes.
I hope you get it. This will be wonderful.
Thank you.
Hey, good luck. I know that on the other end of the park, there was a similar bridge built by another troop, I think, a few years ago, right?
Yes.
It looks like this is similar in scope and size, so good luck to you.
If it's the bridge I'm thinking of, then yeah, there is a bridge over Hatchery Brook in an earlier part that I kind of used as a model.
All right.
It's a little different. It's a little different. They use telephone poles and stringers and I'm using boards kind of stacked together just because it's easier to transport those. But these plans were done by professionals, so it will hold itself up. Excellent.
That's great. We always love to see these Eagle Scout projects. They've done some great work in town and this is just another one, so commend your effort and look forward to the finished product.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we will now take a motion on this?
Sure. Move to approve Brent Catton's Eagle Scout project at Bicentennial Park and Hatchery Brook subject to inland wetlands commission and town staff review. Second?
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Good luck.
Good job.
Thank you.
We're not usually that enthusiastic about our eyes.
Okay, agenda item number two on the agenda tonight is the Central Connecticut Health District. Our plan to relocate their Berlin office to a centralized location. This, this discussion about this for several years and it's coming to fruition. And so Charlie Brown and I have been in conversation and felt it was a good time to have them come and give you an update.
Hi, Charlie, how you doing?
All right, how you doing, Mr. Mark? Good? Yep, so as Jack said, we have been talking about this for several years and it actually has finally come to fruition. Here several weeks ago, we actually signed into a lease agreement to have our offices located at 208 E Silvestine Highway in Rocky Hill. Many of you probably know that area. It's pretty much just right south of Parsonage on the Silvestine. We're going to be in the St. Francis Medical Building, brick building over on the east side of the highway, about 4,700 square feet. That will allow us to bring all of our offices from all four of our towns, all of our personnel into one office. We've been planning this for several years and as Jack said, we've thought over the reasons, the rationale why. And really it's to be able to utilize our personnel assets much more efficiently and to be able to start to do some of the cross-disciplinary things that we've wanted to do for some times. Berlin's pretty supportive of us, has been through this process. Jack and I actually sat down and we met with our sanitarians assigned here, met with department heads from building and zoning to talk about how we're going to continue to support the town. We're really looking at this as an opportunity to be able to provide better service more efficiently as we move forward. And I stand ready to answer any questions you have.
Good questions?
We pay, the town pays a fee for what this district pays.
Yes.
And how's that assessed?
It's a per capita fee at $6 per cap.
And this new headquarters will be more expensive than the old headquarters?
In, yes, because currently we have space within each one of the town halls. So this is going to be on the market. We did a feasibility study before we actually went through this process. We've actually been doing this for about five years now.
It's been discussed for quite a while.
So, but it is going to be a little more expensive as far as that's concerned. We're doing everything that we can to make sure that we stay as efficient as possible. And the thing here that I have to remind the council is, our choice here is between adding staff because we have really a paradigm shift in how we're going to be coming forward. And we're adopting the FDA food thing. And I'm really looking at how we could utilize our personnel, current personnel that we have more efficiently, or potentially having to add personnel to be able to handle the additional workload that we're anticipating. So on the balance between those two, we really look at this almost being a cost neutral.
I hope it works out that way for the sake of our taxpayers.
No, absolutely.
But part of this council issue and mandate is to make sure the citizens are getting the service they need.
Absolutely.
And I know, I always hear people frustration with the Berlin fair time, a lot of permits are required. Have you thought about any kind of system online for food permits so all of these charitable people can avoid the trip to another town to get the food?
Yeah, and that is one of the things that we are going to be looking at is to be able to make a little bit more of our application process in the future, more streamlined, looking at online registration and application. And even looking at being able to take credit cards, you know, over the internet and things of that nature. Those are things that we're looking at to help.
Will you have any hours to accommodate people that aren't during regular work hours? Like if someone wants to volunteer to church food, go get this permit?
Yeah, we are considering that as far, as far as our hours as a whole. One thing that we are absolutely planning on doing is being able to meet people where they're at. So being able to utilize things like appointments, being able to really travel out where we need to go to be able to make it as convenient as possible.
My next question. I remember when our town offered our sanitary in a vehicle during the days they were here. Now it's a health district, you're going to have to get, you know, vehicles for these people to drive around and meet up.
No, and we've actually spoken with, with the towns that provide vehicles with us right now and we're actually looking at just continuing that process. As our inspectors work within the borders of each one of our towns that has a vehicle, the vehicle will be accessible to them so that they can continue that process.
Hope it works out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Both Charlies, could I just add another comment to that?
Sure, please.
By the way, this is Pat Checo, who's our Board of Health Chair person.
Yes, I'm the new chair, guys.
Welcome back.
One of the issues around cars, and we've been very lucky to be in the towns and have cars available to us. But as a former district director of health myself, with a staff of sanitarians, wanted a fleet of cars. It's just an unreasonable burden of expense on something as large.
I understand cars are expensive, that's why I wanted to ask.
District, no. And, and what we did there and what we do here is we pay the mile, the federal mileage for people to use their own cars. So as long as the towns are comfortable and willing to allow us to use a pool car if it's available, that would be wonderful. But we're also prepared, and we've prepared them to know that.
I don't mean to be a nice air. When someone from the government says, "I'm here to help you," that terrifies me.
But you, Charlie, are the government.
And I understand that. I mean, one of, one of the things that we have been very lucky with and we want to continue with is the relationships that we have with the towns and with the departments that we have. So being able to have that as a way to keep our costs down potentially is, is a good thing for everybody and it's a win-win.
Charlie, would you speak for a minute or two on, on service? Not only the service that people are concerned they're going to lose in terms of being available and around, but also the ability to get more involved in those community issues.
Yeah, so one of the reasons why we chose to consolidate, bring our folks together is so that they can really work together cross-disciplinary. In Berlin, we got a good example of this because our town sanitarian or the sanitarian that's assigned here, Jeff Ficchito, he here a few months ago actually worked with our health educator, Louis Penfilla, and they provided an in-service to the Board of Education. They did this as a tag team. Jeff has done this in the past and talked about food service inspections, but this was the first time that we were able to bring in the health education component of this to really talk about how infectious disease happens and provide a little bit more education to the staff within the Board of Education. So this is an opportunity for us to be able to do this on a much more regular basis, to be able to actually, you know, broaden the services that we provide, to be able to utilize those people in ways that we haven't done so before. Having people in the same space, being able to access their skill sets and be able to really build off of those, I think is really going to be an opportunity for us.
And timetable?
Yep, so one thing, we are looking at actually being in our space hopefully here at the turn of the year. So we've just done all the logistics work or have begun the logistics work of ordering furniture, doing all these things that are necessary to be able to set up the office as far as idea construction and those things. Luckily, we did have capital reserve funds that were already set aside, that have already been allocated that allow us to do that. So that isn't going to be something that's reflected into per capita expenses as we see forward. So we're looking pretty good as far as timeline is concerned. So hopefully here at the turn of the year, we will be in our new offices and we'll invite everybody to an open house.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Charlie. Thanks, Brett.
Just as a note, I mean, Charlie's been over to see us several times and we've been trying to coordinate this. We've worked out space so that Jeff has a space to work. He's going to, we're going to have some files that are pertinent to the town of Berlin refining space, so he has those. And so we're working cooperatively with them, cooperatively with them to make this, you know, as seamless as possible. So I think, you know, from the town side and working with them, it's been a well-coordinated so far.
And I do have to say, Jack's experience of working with a district that has a centralized office has really been very helpful. So, you know, it has been very seamless and I want to thank Jack and his staff as well.
Thanks, Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three is the term of golf course equipment lease. We are looking to lease the list of equipment here as laid out in the public hearing. And John Zuck is here to discuss the items.
Hey, John.
Hello, how are you? One good thing is I don't have to read the action because Kate already did that for me. All the numbers in there and everything. Basically, this is a lease with TCF financing. It's a five-year lease with a $1 buyout of the equipment at lease termination. And we, the town, would take ownership of the equipment. The equipment has a life expectancy of approximately 10 years. That's basically what we're looking at.
Thanks. Any questions? We think we discussed this, and we obviously had the public hearing, but I know we discussed it before too. So hearing none, no other questions, we'll take a motion.
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to enter into a lease agreement with TCF utilizing Sourcewell bid contract number 129829 and award the bid to Turf Products Corporation of Enfield, Connecticut for the lease of golf course equipment in the amount not to exceed $18,113, which includes a $250 documentation fee for the first year of the five-year lease and amount not to exceed $17,863 per year for the remaining four years of that lease. For a total five-year lease term not to exceed $89,565.
Second? Second. Thank you very much. Any further questions or discussions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Next item on the agenda is for the early order chemical program for the golf course. I believe John does it on a annual basis, so he's here to discuss what he does to get the chemicals he needs for next season.
The following companies in the agenda item, Bayer, BASF, Syngenta, C Pro classify a portion of their materials and products as agency. What this means basically is the vendors are contracted by the manufacturers to sell to the end user at a manufacturer's set price. So the vendor cannot change the price no matter who we purchased the materials from. It's a set price by the manufacturers. And with the brand name companies, we get a guarantee from the manufacturers that the chemical will work properly. And in case of any damage, these companies are obviously well-funded. They would be able to, through a class action lawsuit, recover the clubs or lawn care people would be able to recover damages. There was a case with a chemical called Impreles. It was made by DuPont and it killed hundreds of thousands of trees in the Northeast. And DuPont ended up paying about $1 billion in a class action lawsuit. If that had been with a generic chemical company, they would probably just walk away from it. So that's one of the good things with the brand names. And also on the, on the chemical label, it's a listing of all the inert materials identified. This can be extremely important when mixing different types of chemicals, different chemicals. The terms of the EOP program, we would take delivery of the materials by February 15th and it would invoice the town on, about July 10th of 2019. In the agenda item also is a table of the materials we're looking to purchase. Also, there is the rebates, terms with the rebates. And for instance, you get in that table, it's a 7% rebate on the early order chemicals we purchase and then it's a 7% off all in-season pricing of those chemicals. So if we were to buy some other materials from Syngenta during the season, we would still get another 7% off, so it's a, it's a good deal. And again, like Jack said, we've been doing this for quite a few years and most golf courses in the country are participating in early order programs.
Okay. Thanks, John. Any questions? Hearing none, take a motion.
Okay, move to waive the bidding procedure and purchase chemicals from Harrells in Winfield in the amount not to exceed $59,365, as this is in the best interest of the town of Berlin. The chemical purchases are through an early order programs of BASF, Syngenta, C Pro, Bayer Chemical Companies.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and carried.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five is to, enter into a memorandum agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services. An MOA is used to authorize them to administer funds through the regional crop. We do this on a, on a regular basis and Matt Dishwe is here to go over the, the resolution.
Hey, Matt.
Evening, how are you guys?
Good.
Good. This has been going on, we've had this grant for many, many years. I think it goes back when Cirepsi was still around and I think they started it and when they went to funk crop, picked it up. And it's basically just money from the feds and basically took all the towns that are in their system, lumped all the money together. So basically they're managing the money and the equipment, anything that's purchased with that money. So this is just our annual resolution and MOU with them.
Okay, any questions? Easy enough? Take a motion.
Okay, move to authorize a resolution that the Berlin Town Council may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. Any and all documents which it seems to be necessary or appropriate and further resolved that Jack Healy as town manager, the town of Berlin, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Berlin Town Council and to do and perform all acts and things he/she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents completed by such documents.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Comments? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Thanks, Matt.
Agenda item number six is to authorize the purchase of a cargo van for the Facilities Department. Jim Simons is here to discuss the, the process of trying to acquire this, this van.
Hey, Jim.
How are we all doing?
Good.
So purchase a used vehicle. It makes it difficult to do that with a town purchasing requirements. As you go out, you locate a vehicle that is worthy to be purchased, then you have to come back here and then go through the council and then you lose time. Unable to put deposits down on vehicles and things like that, you lose the vehicle. So what we've done in the past, whenever we purchased a used vehicle, is I came up for you and you authorized myself to go out and look for a vehicle and go through the town manager, make that purchase, and we can do it in a timely fashion.
Requesting $17,000, authorization up to $17,000.
Yeah, that's the budgeted figure for that used vehicle.
And then you go look for the van? Or you have a van?
No, I haven't, I haven't been out yet.
Yeah, so, yeah, so you, we got the money, you put aside and.
We budgeted the money last year.
But I mean, you know, this should find you what you need.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to look for, I don't know if it's called a minivan, but, but one of those smaller vans.
A transport server, whatever the term is.
Yeah, transits.
Transits. For transit?
So we're going to look for something of that line. It will be replacing a vehicle that originally was a natural gas vehicle back in 97. We converted it to regular gas and we got rid of the natural gas and it's just all hot out. It's, it's done.
Okay. Any questions for Jim? Take a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of a used cargo van for the Facilities Department for an amount not to exceed $17,500 with the approval of the town manager.
Second. Thank you. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and carried.
Agenda item number seven, essentially this is to formalize the, I sent you an email about we had an emergency repair on a front bay door. Jim needed to get started on getting that door replaced. It was closed and we couldn't get trucks out of it unless we looked at it with forelifts. So you should have got an email from me and I believe almost everybody can get back to me and authorize us to go receive. This is a formal approval.
Okay, yeah, we, we all got this in an email, so we're going to take a motion on this.
Okay, move to ratify and reaffirm the emergency authorization to waive the town's purchasing requirements and contract with Northeast Overhead Door Corporation of Westfield, Mass. to replace one garage door at the town garage for an amount not to exceed $7,000 as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Thank you. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
Agenda item number eight is also for Jim. It's the purchase of the personal protective equipment from a company called Lion. Looking to authorize up to $60,000 worth of equipment. Equipment comes, personal protective equipment is important for our firefighters and it needs to be continually upgraded and updated, so they're looking for approval to spend the money for this year.
Anything to add?
Just that this is the first time we'll be going with Lion.
Okay.
We've always gone with, with other manufacturers. We've been with Globe now for 10 years. The firefighters about 15 months ago formed a committee to go out and research the materials that are out there so that we can make sure that we're getting the best for our guys. So the material that is actually creates the garment is all the same, the, between manufacturers. So what it comes down to is the fit of that garment on, on the firefighters. And there's many different cuts, much like getting soup or something like that, many different cuts. So when they went out there, they looked at, at all that, they felt that this Lion vendor had the best fit and the best wear that they were going to have on that. So this is why we're going now, we're going to a Lion, which they feel is better. The material that we're actually purchasing is the same material to create the garment. The material that we're actually purchasing is the same material to create the garment that we've always used.
Is this outfitting for all firefighters or just?
You're, you're, out of that $60,000, you're probably gonna replace somewhere between 18 and 23 sets every year.
Okay.
To keep up with the NFPA standards and the rotation of that gear.
Right.
It's an annual expense, unfortunately.
The garments have a set life, right?
The garments have a set life of 10 years. That is the maximum. It doesn't matter whether that garment is still in a bag, but it has an expiration date of 10 years on it.
If we don't do this next year, we have to buy twice as much.
Yeah. So, so we go through that. And that expiration date is not only on the garment itself, but it's also on the boots and the helmets and the complete ensemble. So there's, when we look at that $60,000 or that budgeted figure, that's purchasing a whole bunch of different items. But we are going with Lion this time for our main garment.
So we are getting everything we need?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions, we'll take a motion.
Okay. I move to approve the purchase of fire department protective clothing from Lion in an amount not to exceed $60,000 utilizing the NPP GOV contract number PSI 6008.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Jim?
Agenda item number nine is to approve the purchase of a conservation easement off Beckley Road. This has been coming before you several times for different actions, most recently, I think, for the 8-24. Chris Edge is here to discuss the acquisition.
Yes, this was discussed a couple different times with the council. This essentially was the land that we're gonna be purchasing with the Land Trust for open space. The long-term goal is to, again, regain access to Webster Park. This essentially is part of the purchase at a conservation easement, so that it will be used for open space, basically for all time, and will be on the town records.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Talked about this a couple times. Any questions? We will have a motion.
Okay. Move to approve acquiring a conservation easement for MAT 17-1, Block 132, Lot 11 on Beckley Road from the Burling Land Trust for $12,000 to be paid from the open space in lieu of fee account, subject to review and approval of the easement by the corporation council.
Second. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, folks.
Agenda item number 10. Tonight is the extension of exclusive non, excuse me, exclusive negotiating agreement. This is with Newport Realty Group. This is for the TOD project that we are looking at down near the train station. They need to do an extension because they're doing their work, but it's taking a little more time than the original plan. Mark Kozakowski is here to discuss the extension.
So as you probably remember, in July, I came for the council to present that we chose a, we went through the RFQ process to choose a developer for the four-acre property owned by the town next to the train station. And we chose the Newport Realty Group to work with, and we signed an exclusive negotiating contract with them in September with some specific dates where the developer had some responsibilities and an end date for the contract. And we've been working with the developer, town staff and departments with them. We've been going through this iterative process to develop a concept plan that has mixed-use development and satisfies the goals of the area. And I guess it's an iterative process, and like we wanted, like we hoped for, and they've been very well-to-work with, so we're hoping that we can extend the contract a little bit more to, just to keep it, just to keep the process moving forward.
Great. Thanks. Questions? Comments? Hearing none? Take a motion.
Okay. Move to allow the town manager to sign an amendment to the exclusive negotiating agreement to include an extension to February 28th, 2019, for the completion of the developer's tasks and to extend the negotiation period between April 30th, 2019, with Newport Realty Group LLC. Further develop conceptual site plan for TOD downtown village development on the properties located 889, 903, and 913 Farmington Avenue.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Agenda item number 11 is a follow-up to a previous meeting. There was a request for a report on the signs of public right-of-ways. So we went further, talked to Mark Kozakowski, he's the one who was enforcing the sign regulations. So I asked Mark to come up for you tonight and give you an update on the regulations and our actions during the political season.
These are some of the signs that came down in enforcement action. I know Jack asked me to come up to speak with you, but what I hope to get out of this conversation is just a little guidance on how we want to move forward as a town in regulating signage posted in state, in town right-of-ways. So the town, zoning enforcement has been regulating and pulling signs every once in a while from the state right-of-way. Typically, there are those "we buy houses" signs, other landscaping signs. For a while now, typically, what would happen is the zoning enforcement officer, along with somebody else, would go schedule a day, and they'd just do a drive-by and pull up any of the small signs that are close to the road. What happened this July is I got a complaint from a resident, a phone call, saying that there was a sign posted on the fence that, as you say, there is a rate one that beat taxpayers. I had not seen the sign, but I went to investigate and noticed the location on the fence over by the train station bridge on Farmington Avenue. After a visual inspection, I went to the town GIS to see what the location of it was, and it was determined that, or I determined based on the maps, that it was located in the state right-of-way. I called the district manager, DOT, to see if there was any signs that were authorized in that area, and there were none. And he gave Carplanche approval, authorization to eliminate any signs that, in the right-of-way that had no authorization to be there. So, so I, upon that, and within the zoning regulations, there is a sign that prohibits signs to be posted on fences, walls, trees, rocks, or anything like that. So upon that information, I went and removed the sign. And the next day or so, the owner of the sign came and picked up the sign. Fast forward, and fast forward to, well, no, after that, we, I realized that there's gonna be a, this issue needed to be addressed. I had several conversations with Maureen, the zoning enforcement officer, as well as the town manager, and what the best way to go about this, about regulating signs in the right-of-way. And Jack reiterated to me that as long as we have a regulation to point to, as long as we be fair and treat everybody fairly and equally, he had support of whatever enforcement action deemed appropriate. So fast forward to, so at that point, no, I don't wanna fast forward yet. There were other signs on the fence. They were removed. Later, there was more signs put on that fence. Upon complaints, I investigated, removed those signs. So at least three times, signs were removed from that same fence, including this sign as an example, Troop 256 advertising a pasta dinner. So fast forward to October, there was, a complaint was received in my office about three signs that were posted near this fence on Farmington Avenue, as well as a popular sign, political sign placed on Mill Street, as well as, and as well as on Chamberlain Highway crossroad, in that triangle near the gas station. So the zoning enforcement officer and I went to investigate, and there was more signs posted on the fence, so we removed those signs. And there was another sign that had, it was political nature, similar to that one in that photo, that used the words racist and bigot and other political signs like that, posted in the state right-of-way. That one was determined to be in the state right-of-way, but I was met, we were met on site by another resident who removed the sign himself and moved it off of state property into private property. Maureen and I proceeded to the Mill Street site, and we discovered there was many, many signs, many large signs, some small signs, very large signs, with metal stakes, and just lots of square footage of signage. And we weren't equipped to remove those signs on the spot. We had the sedan, and we just didn't have the space or the manpower to take care of that. We were met by that same resident that met us on Farmington Avenue, and we told him that we couldn't, we didn't have the capacity to remove those signs, and he, we assumed he would take the opportunity to talk to, go through his channels and see what agreements can be made. Maureen and I moved on to the Chamberlain Avenue site, and there was more larger signs. We were met there. There was not just political signs, but as well as those landscaping signs and realtor signs and things of that sort. Nonprofit, you know, community event signs. And upon investigation of the signage and the property line as far as that was on the town GIS, we determined those were in the state right-of-way. We were met there on site by Joe Arsenewitz and as well as another town resident, and to discuss what the issue was. At that point, we were able to secure a DPW, Public Works, staff with a pickup truck, and we proceeded to remove the signs from that site. A few weeks later after that, upon a complaint, we learned that more signs were put up in that spot, and they were able to be removed by Maureen and myself. And then sometime in that process, we received a complaint from a business owner near the Mill Street signs complaining that, well, having, taking issue that the signs were blocking visibility of his business. So we were able to secure, working with the Public Works Director, secure two DPW workers as well as, as well as some staff to remove those signs. And all the signs, the signs in this time were brought to the garage, so they could be retrieved by the owners. And the other signs the other time were brought to town hall to be retrieved by the owners, and many of which were returned. So that's essentially the story. Moving forward, I would just like a little guidance from the town council, maybe through Jack, to see how we want to handle enforcement of signs in the town right-of-way. The zoning regulations have very specific requirements for private property. It's somewhat vague on signs in the right-of-ways. I guess that's what I got right now. Yes.
You mentioned that in July, you received a complaint. Was it a verbal complaint?
It was a verbal complaint.
So how'd you know it was a resident?
I knew who it was.
Oh, so? By his voice? Or they identified themselves?
By voice. Yeah.
And you said you received subsequent complaints. Verbal?
They were all verbal.
So you act on verbal complaints?
Not anymore. Since this process, I consulted over, consulted with some other colleagues, and I liked the idea of one of them where all complaints had to be written, be written with name of person complaining to be identified and then signed for.
In my former life, I worked for the state of Connecticut, and they require all complaints to be in writing. And to act on a verbal complaint is really unheard of. I don't know if you wanna say who it was. I mean, you're supposed to be able to face your accusers, and I don't really care, but the point is...
I'll tell you if you want. I just ask.
The point is, acting on a verbal complaint isn't very professional, I don't think. And I would wish that in the future, that you would change that policy.
Okay. And it has been changed.
Well, that much has been done. I mean, the election cycle is over. But I was really surprised to learn that a municipality would act on a verbal complaint.
That's not uncommon practice. We do our best to enforce the regulations and make sure the town is functioning, you know?
Normally, you should be able to face your accuser. That's all I got.
So do you keep records, the verbal complaints? Is there a record associated with it? Did you take the name of the person, and is it recorded?
Not recorded. I mean, I'll tell you who they are if you ask me, but it's, no, we don't do that. We just, we, there's an issue, we try to address it as timely as we can.
So right now, it's only committed to your memory?
What is committed to memory?
The names of the people who complained or businesses?
I guess so, yeah.
I'm confused here. If a town resident calls town hall, which happens every day in this town, they don't ask for anything in writing. They can make a complaint to the town anytime they want. And I'm not sure why we would stifle that. That's concerning to me personally, as a citizen. And I'm also curious, in this whole sign issue, since we're going down the road, I guess we'll go all the way down it. When the signs were taken down a couple times, both parties' political signs, one political party's signs were left by the side of the road for pickup, and another political party's signs went to the town yard, and they couldn't be retrieved for a while. That happened twice. I'm just concerned, doesn't matter which party, but if one party was treated differently than the other party by a town employee, that's most disturbing. So I'd like to know why that happened, as well as someone making a verbal complaint, but, you know, now we're treating a town employee who was paid by all the taxpayers of the town, is treating one party different than the other, and that's really disturbing.
There's three instances where something to that effect happened. The first time, it was at the Farmington Avenue site where a person took, picked up his own sign and moved it off of state property. So it was considered no longer a violation.
That's fine.
At another site on Mill Street, Maureen and I went out there, and it was, it was a, there was a larger sign. It would have, the owner of the sign was at the site and asked if he could bring his own sign home with him. And if it was, if it was a political sign, if it was a landscaping sign, if it was, if it was a sign by any of our local communities, if they, if they wanna take away their sign and remove the violation, it's, it's a good practice just to let them take their sign with them. It's no longer a violation when it's gone.
Yeah, I agree with that. I find that odd, though. So you're out doing your job, and someone just happens to be at that site where you're at and just happened to be there? Just coincidence, I guess? On several occasions, or just a coincidence?
Well, I didn't call anybody to...
No, I'm not saying you did, but I mean, I just find it an odd coincidence. No, I'm not saying you did, but I mean, I just find it an odd coincidence that just happens to be that, you know, someone knows, I guess, every move you're, and I'm not-
Yeah, no, I understand.
... on you, but it's just curious because, you know, most coincidences are kind of odd, but anyway, and then there was a third instance.
And the last incident, when, when DPW was asked to remove the signs over on the Mill Street, I was not there, but from what I understand, there was a resident of the town asked if he can take his own signs with him. So, the Public Works staff said that they could-
So, the third time?
The third time.
Someone happened to be there?
Someone happened to be-
The signs were coming down?
They were coming down and they asked if he can take his own signs away and the DPW-
I find that very, 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 very unusual and very strange, but I guess strange things happen. Anyway, yes, Charlie?
This is a huge expense and time consuming for our staff.
Granted.
I estimate about $1,400 worth of staff time and resources.
Almost a little childish at some points, we argue over this, this point.
Agreed.
What we need is a clear cut regulation. I know the, the state DOT has no problem yanking down signs in their right of way. Number one, it's in your way when it do maintenance. Number two, it could be a safety hazard for a line of sight. They don't notify anybody to get rid of this stuff because it's considered a hazard. Our town should have a clear cut regulation. Everybody can understand they're allowed in the right of way or they're not allowed in the right of way. And if they're blocking the line of sight, of course they're dangerous. But there should be a clear cut engineering judgment, not a political issue.
Right, which is the reason for the state, right?
Right.
Mainly it's-
Safety.
Safety.
And I think that in light of all that stands to reason that all of that be documented. I personally, I think it's a great idea to have requests of that nature put in writing, emailed, writing, even if somebody had to come down to the town to complete a form. But I think up until the point where that's-
Would that apply to other-
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Up until the point where that's established, I think that anybody who makes a verbal complaint should absolutely be documented, just for future reference in the case, you know, there's repeated offenses or, you know, just if there's some kind of record, mistake, name, record just about everything.
We document the, the investigation and the action taken. Those, those are documented.
And that's what I was getting at because I, I agree, people can make complaints all the time. I don't have any issue with that, but for me, in the world I live in, if it's not documented, it hasn't been done. That's, you know, nurses carry that everywhere. So, I really believe that we should document. And the other thing that I, I do what?
So, the lawyers.
Yeah. The other thing though, that I, I'm thinking though, in the, some of the ages of our citizens, they could call and make a complaint and perhaps we also have to have the ability to have the person taking the complaint have a form that they can document, that maybe that person isn't able to drive to the Town Hall and maybe they don't have internet. So, I think we have to look at, you know, not just in person, not just internet, but if there's some certain-
If it's by phone and it's documented, if they ask questions, yeah, I mean, that's a different story.
Their name, their telephone number, their address so that you can confirm.
So, I mean, I think, no, go ahead.
On the complaint thing, should that carry into every issue? I know, my wife gets the phone calls while I'm here, but sometimes somebody knocked over my mailbox during a storm or they plowed into my driveway, extra snow. Should all these complaints be in writing then? That's my question.
Or at least documented?
I think-
They should be recorded, documented.
Yeah, absolutely. What do we do with someone calling up, I don't know, the mayor in my yard?
I think we're confused. Is it the town action should be documented or the complainant, his name, his or her name should be documented?
I think the whole thing, the reason they call, who they are.
Yeah. So, my only concern is there's some people that might not feel comfortable providing their name because it's a small town and regardless of political affiliation.
But you really can't act.
Yeah, but you know what? If it is a clear cut violation, you have to act, right? Regardless of party. So, my recommendation, and I'm curious to hear your thoughts, is would it save time, effort and issues, or at least some time effort and issues to, like at the Chamberlain Highway, put some flags and say, within this area, you're A-OK. So, at the beginning of the season, you put some flags out there and everyone knows that you go outside of bounds and you're good to go, so you don't have to keep going there four times in one month. You leave a flag there and you say, at the beginning of the season, you go once, you put it there, if it's in here, you're good, if not, and you happen to be driving by-
It's going to prevent somebody from taking out the flags they would have signed.
I know, I know.
I mean, if DOT is fine with them being there, I'm fine with them.
Well, I'm just trying to think outside the box. I mean, at the end of the day, if there is a violation, I don't care who makes the complaint or what, I, if someone's not comfortable with making the complaint because they don't want to be known, I'm okay with it, if it's a violation. But I certainly feel like your office should be documenting it to alleviate any issues of impropriety. You know what I mean?
Oh, we do it, yeah.
I think it should be documented.
Yes.
I mean, if you call with an anonymous complaint that, let's forget the sign issue because we're probably going to beat that to death, I'm sure, some more, but, and that's okay, we need to get a resolution, but anything else is wrong with the town, which could be, there's a tree that's fallen down hitting an electric line. Oh, let's get a, you know, we're going to go out and check that out. I think we do that routinely. Do we need to know who called that in and I know it's a little bit of an issue, but-
I don't see how it hurts, just to say, okay, can I have your name?
Yeah, but you know what? You're putting a little bit of a chilling effect on people calling in. I don't think you are. They are. People don't want their names. That's just, that's just the way it is. You may not feel that way, I may not feel that way, but people do feel that way. People have said that to me. I said, why don't you call the town? Ah, I don't want to, you know, I don't want, I don't want to call. So, I'm just saying, just consider the other side, I'm sorry. So, Jack, go ahead.
Typically, I mean, I get, we get, I get, I probably get more than one a day on these. And typically what I'll do is I forward them on to Mark or I forward them on to Public Works or whoever. And 90, 95% of the time, we have a name, we have something. It's just because, and I was talking to Mark about this day, I don't want to be termed a complaint. I've always told people these aren't complaints. It's, it's like, you know, because most of them aren't political signs, you know, we're just talking about one thing, but it's trees, it's potholes, it's mailboxes, it's garbage cans. And it may seem rudimentary to you, but they're important to the residents and so I don't listen to complaints. As I tell people, it's not a complaint. It's like having 20,000 extra eyes out there telling us-
Customer service.
It's customer service is what it is. And so, 90, 95% of the time, we have a name, we have an address. In fact, most of the time, we call you back or we send you an email or we send you a letter. Somehow, somebody gets back to you and says, this is where you are. Because honestly, most residents want that feedback back, say, we did what you asked us to do.
So, for those that choose not to give identification, something doesn't get addressed that should have been addressed and then they call back and say, hey, I called you like a week or two ago.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we don't know, we didn't know, we don't have any record of that. So, to me, it just, it doesn't make any sense not to take somebody's, understood, but they can't even leave a message, right? And they might not leave-
Oh, I get messages at home on weekends and things and, you know, on the town cell phone and even on weekends and I think, you know, I pick up the cell phone on weekends and I do address, if it's an important issue, you know, I will call somebody if it's tree down or if there's a power line problem or something else, because our problems don't just happen Monday through Friday. They don't happen conveniently between 8:30 and 4:30 in the afternoon. They're all the time. And so, we, you know, essentially, we're on, staff is on call 24 hours a day to answer these questions, take and get back to people because they want to know. They want to know. Quite often, sometimes I'll just tell people, if you go to the website, you know, it's power loss, it's electricity. I say, if you go to the ever source website, you go here, you can see where Berlin is and when you're going to lose, when you get your power back. So, it's just customer service.
So, to your point though, Peter, of being able to question my accuser, if someone calls Town Hall with a tree down, line down, sign on state right of way, town right of way, there is no accuser. Someone reported a violation of a regulation or a law of anything, that's the proof in the pudding. I don't need to go find that person and say, I mean, you know, if we go out and check what someone called and what they called on is a violation, we fix it. Why do I, why would I confront the person calling in if we waste time and every call we get is a waste of time? I would agree, but, and I don't know the answer to that question, Jack, but I would imagine most people that I speak to, that even come up to me, that know me personally or know me as the mayor, know me as a council member, whatever, most people will tell me, you know, I don't want to call Town Hall. So, I think most people are afraid to make that call, whether it's their name or no name, but the ones that are calling are alerting the town to something we need to fix. I can't believe, and I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, you tell me, Jack. I would imagine most of the calls, whether they're anonymous or whether they're identified, are not prank calls and are generally reporting to us a problem, a potential problem, something we need to look at.
I can't think one that I've got a prank call.
So, I don't get, I don't get all the documentation. I think you're chilling, it's a chilling effect on a resident to call in and say, look, there's something on this street that's wrong, please check it out. I, I do not understand it. If we can identify them, yes, more than, you know, that's the better way to go, I agree. But I wouldn't discount that call just because I don't have an identity of that person. That, that seems pretty off the mainstream to me, to do to residents of our town.
We would do a mistake because a lot of it was harassment.
Well, and if it comes to-
And that's possible.
Yeah, that's possible.
Maybe our attorney should weigh in on this because if there's a potential lawsuit, what standing do we have if nothing's documented it?
You have to differentiate in terms of what you're talking about. If you're talking about, I think somebody mentioned a scenario where there's property damage, then there's a statutory obligation for them to file a notice of intent to sue with the town clerk within a specific period of time. So, if that's not documented, they're waiving rights. Most towns on the land use front, most towns that we work with have a log. So, if someone calls in, they simply identify who the person was, what they called about and what the follow-up, if any, is required. They don't require that a complaint about a zoning violation or a sign ordinance or any other regulatory violation be submitted in writing, but they do record it in a log because not only is it important to be able to document these things when they come to the town's attention, but oftentimes the zoning enforcement officer, for example, is an agent of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I've seen some towns where the Planning and Zoning Commission wants a monthly report on enforcement activity from the zoning enforcement officer. So, having that log available sometimes can avoid the zoning enforcement officer.
So, how would you say that if the person doesn't want to be identified and they bring something to the town's attention, do you ignore it? Is that a problem on the town?
You cannot ignore it because once, no matter how it comes to your attention, again, if we're talking about signage, whatever, zoning regulations, right? If you're talking about something that is a violation of a regulation, whether it's a building code issue, whether it's a zoning issue, whether it's some other legal issue, once it's brought to the town's attention, regardless of whether you know who the person is that brought into your attention or not, you then have the duty to investigate it. And this, this does, you know, there are, I mean, I get calls, not ever from any Berlin citizens, but in other towns, I get calls from people who don't want to be identified and they're calling me because they are concerned if they call somebody in Town Hall, they'll be recognized. So, you know, once it comes to our attention, then we have a duty to investigate it. You know, sometimes it is of a personal nature and it may not be legitimate, but we still have to investigate it.
I'm thinking like a renter of a house, you know, wants to complain about some building code violation that he or she is afraid to be identified, you know, I mean, I'm, you know, there's a million different scenarios, but-
When you're talking about the-
The log, if we have a log, that's great, but, but we can't hold.
You can't force somebody to give their name-
Of course not.
-because they could lie to.
No, nor would I suggest, you know, ignoring something. You never need it anyway, you know, life threatening or problematic. But I think a log is warranted.
And with a log, would you put, person refuses to give name?
Well, you would have, you would have a space on the log for the name-
Yep.
And if they refuse to provide their name, you just say, come here, refused, Paul refused to give.
So, it makes sense to have a log.
On the signage, you have to be a little bit careful with political signage because it is treated differently than commercial speech from a First Amendment and equal protection perspective, you know? Non-content based restriction, which is what we're talking about, you can have regulations that are designed to limit the size, the dimensions, the design, the placement of the signage, as long as it's designed to, or intended to accomplish a legitimate government purpose, like traffic, safety, aesthetics, sightlines, things like that. There's an intermediate scrutiny that applies to non-content based restrictions. You can't outright ban political signage on public property. What happens, and I get these calls in, again, not in Berlin yet, but in other towns, every election day, every year, I get calls and I try to get the campaigns to work together and agree on a number, you know? This year I got a call from one town saying, oh, so-and-so has 30 signs up on a school property. And I said, well, if they're not blocking the sightline and they're not otherwise, a safety issue, you're free to put up as many signs as you want, as long as you don't create any safety issues as well. And tomorrow they need to be taken down when the, when the election's over. So, you know, the restrictions have to be necessary to promote a compelling town interest such as public safety. So, you know, again, usually what we do is we, early in the campaign, try to get the parties to work together and agree on sign placement. If they can't do that, then if the signs are placed in an area that is problematic from a sightline perspective, then, you know, we'll, we'll exercise discretion to take them down.
I mean, that's a town property, but how about the state right of way that they tell us?
That's up to the state. The state typically says, no signs on our right of way. You know, whether or not that's constitutional, that's not our problem.
Right.
You know, they do that in every town. They don't want signage in their right of way. If we wanted to refine our regulations so people have a clear understanding, I'm sure a lot of us, just people didn't understand communication. Would that come from zoning or would that be part of our ordinance?
Planning and zoning is about to redo the sign ordinance, the sign regulation, yeah?
So-
Which they could look at.
As a council, can we request the zoning-
We could tell the town planner to bring it up to, we all agree, bring it up to Planning and Zoning and see if they get-
So, every election year, maybe we'll put in a-
Tighten up the regulation a little bit more and figure out what, you know?
I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that, well, Mr. Peter told us, that they're not allowed in the state right of way in the state.
That's clear.
So, we don't need a zoning regulation.
No, no.
But as a town right of ways, I mean, I would look for some guidance and see how we want, how we as a community want to regulate those and I'd be more than willing to codify it in the zoning right, or ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to codify it.
And these, this review would include not only political signs, but pasta supper or beer tasting?
Be everything.
Everything.
All signs, yeah.
Yeah, the sign regulations cover every sign.
You could, I mean, you can have content for non-political signage, you can have more restrictive content language. It's just from a political signage, there's all kinds of federal law over the last 15 years because this is an issue all over the country. So, there's just about every, of course, nothing in Connecticut because there's never any law on anything important in Connecticut, but there's lots of federal, you know, all the way up to the circuit courts of appeals, there's plenty of law that makes clear that political signage is different than non-political signage.
It just depends on how it's to be?
Well, it does, which brings me back to my point. How did someone know three times in a row to go pick up one sign and leave? That boggles my mind, that someone following town employees around. I just find that really odd that town employees are out doing their job and someone happens to be at a place three different times to grab their signs and the other ones get taken away and locked up. I, I don't know. I mean, that, that concerns me almost more than anything that our town employees are being shadowed, I guess, or maybe something worse. I don't know, but how do we, I don't know what to do about that, Mark, but I just think that's odd that when I heard that, I found it very strange and didn't want to go there, but since we went there with the signs, you know, I figured I'd bring it up. So, just, I guess be careful when you're out there. I don't know why people follow you around, but-
So, are we gonna, you're gonna come back with some suggestions for ordinance?
Ordinance for-
Or ordinance committee?
Yeah, so it'd be ordinance committee, I think, for the public right of way.
Yeah, a lot. What do we need?
This is a, this is a planning regulation. It's not a council ordinance.
I understand that.
Yeah.
So, they would do it?
If it was planning, well, planning, sorry, sorry. If it's in, if we're talking about the town right of ways, that's municipal land, the zoning regulation speaks to mostly to private property or, or town property that would exclusive of right of ways, to put it simply. So, if, I guess we'd have to investigate whether it'd be appropriate through a zoning regulation or through a town ordinance.
All right, you get back to those.
Yeah, we'll go back to that.
Yeah.
Might be simple, concise, so everybody understands the rules and then I'll make the argument.
It'll just make sure that we are right now documenting, again, maybe not quite foremost a lot.
No, to be clear, we are documenting. We do, we do take phone calls and notes and customers at the counter would take notes and we do investigate and- at the counter who take notes, and we do investigate. And when we do investigate, we do have a, we have a system, a computer system, that's paired with the zoning permits and then the building permits. It's, that process is taking place, and we do identify what the issue is and what investigative report or investigation action taken on that. So that is documented, and it's been, that's been the case for a long time.
Okay.
I'm sure at this time it was such an issue. It was.
All right, move on.
Yes, move on, please. Please do.
Agenda item number 12. This is a request to transfer funds. We're going to request to transfer from the contingency to the Public Works Contractual Services. I'm requesting $15,000. Not that we'll try to, we'll try to spend less than that. We went to court last week about the blighted property in 77 Elton Road, and we were issued a, we were issued an injunction, a temporary, excuse me, a temporary injunction. In the temporary injunction, we requested the right to remove certain trees from the bushes, mow the grass, do some work on, not work on the house, but just make sure the pan and the door windows and things are covered, remove gutters, move some metal plastic furnitures and garbage and trash. We're putting together a work plan right now, within, a team of us within Public Works and building department to clean, to do a, I don't want to say clean up the property entirely, to do some cleanup of the property so that the neighbors are, will be able to use their lawns and enjoyment going forward. I have contacted the residents to let them know that we did get the temporary injunction, and they're appreciative of our actions. And so therefore, I'm requesting up to $15,000. We transferred from contingency. We feel it's appropriate to come from contingency. This is not a place.
I didn't know where they were going.
Thank you, first of all, Jack, Jeff, Planning and Zoning, everyone who helped finally get something done on this property. It's been that way for ever, right?
Jen.
Jen.
As I say, turning the poll, please, thank her.
Yeah, no, definitely Jen. I know Jen was instrumental in doing that. And we're talking like, I think nine years from what I remember, even going back a couple years on the people approached me at the Berlin Fair, and I went back many years before then. So, and I know we had to redo our ordinances, and we did a lot, a lot of work, and we tried, unfortunately, with this gentleman. So, you know, this is not the road we ever hope to have to go down again with a blighted property. Generally, the homeowners or the business owners or the property owners will cooperate. So we're very, you know, very happy we got this far. But it took a lot of town, way too much town time and effort and money, but and now it's going to take more money to clean up what should be, you know, a private property issue, not our problem. But that's, that's what the blighted laws are for.
Is there any chance of that money being cooped?
Good question. Yeah, if we'll lean on the property, that's part of the.
Okay. I mean, that's what I was imagining.
So he showed up, right? I wasn't there, but Jennifer came in to look.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he showed up in court, filed an appearance.
Wow.
And showed up for the hearing.
Whoa.
Pro se?
Yeah.
You wrote pro se.
Did we, did we hear from the gentleman?
Yeah, I talked to him. He requested that I agree that we would never seek to sell the lien. I refused to do that. Jennifer told me that we have to go to town council, and my comment to him was that I would never recommend that to you, that you need to have that as a, as a argumentative. So I said I would not do that.
But like, was there any answer in court or on the record or off the record about why he just never?
There's a long, convoluted, if you want to sit down and have a copy, I'll explain.
Gotcha. No, I mean, I understood there had to be some reason why, you know, the gentleman wouldn't answer us all these years, but I'm glad we moved on from it. So we need a motion if he agrees.
Okay. Move to transfer $15,000 from the general fund contingency account to the Public Works Contractual Services account of our cleanup costs at 77 Elton Road.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, the, we can recoup with a lien. Is there interest on that?
Yes.
There is. It's a little longer, he waits, they create the amount.
Kevin Delaney has already told me that there's, that there's interest. We'll start accruing on it.
Very good.
And can I just ask you a question? What does sell a lien mean?
It means take the town's interest in the property that's evidenced by the recorded lien on land record and sell it to a third party.
Oh.
Who could then foreclose the lien.
Oh, okay. I agree with that. Thank you.
And any other questions? You're reading none? But some of the floor else in favor?
Aye.
Pose. If you care, just thank you.
I'm worried about what happens.
Town manager.
Town manager, for a couple things. As you know, we've had several meetings on the, on the senior community center. Jim Mahoney, and I put, I always give Jim most credit, he put together a lot of this, and we collaborated on this. This is a discussion of how to go forward with the senior slash community center project. A lot of it is prescriptive. It comes out of the charter using the Public Building Commission. Jim and I went back and forth, there's a lot of time, I believe he talked with Jeff about this also, in that the prescriptive method, it almost excludes the public from being involved, extremely involved. And as you know, we've talked several times about getting the public involved. One of the ways is by getting like an advisory group or something involved with it. What I'm asking you to do, if you would, is read through this. This is, this is just some options available. And we'd like to hear back from you, if you would, at your next council meeting, looking at what we've proposed, or maybe giving us some other thoughts that you may have as far as going forward. It's a lot of material. I didn't want to try to cover it tonight in the meeting. I'd rather you take time to read it, or if you want to send questions to me or Jim Mahoney or Jeff just about this. But if you go into, the first section of the charter also included in here, as you can see, it's pretty prescriptive, but it doesn't allow for a formation of an advisory team. And myself, I think that that's important.
Does or does not?
Does not. And that's why I think it's important. When I've worked on public projects in other towns, we've always had a public advisory committee, a group of residents who are involved, not politically, not normally politically connected, just normal residents who want to get, not that you aren't normal residents, but people aren't associated with you.
No, I'm not sure about that. Yeah.
No, no. I want to be careful.
I'm going to miss.
Yeah, exactly. I'm asking you to, if you have any questions, please get back to us. That's what I'm asking. I see Ray is here, so I guess the hearing is over. I wanted to report that they were having a public hearing on a rate increase with Berlin Water Commission. Ray is here. I don't know if you would entertain him, just giving you a short.
You don't mind.
Okay. I put you on the spot, Ray.
How're you doing, Ray?
Appreciate it.
We got to remortgage the house, pay the water bill now?
Well, actually, we had quite a bit of the two gentlemen here from the press and another one that was here also. So we got quite a bit of coverage from the press on this one as far as the actual rate increases, Berlin Citizen, New Britain, and, excuse me, and then the Hartford Current as well. And we did notice it in the public press, and we didn't have one individual comment. One lady did come in a little later, and we did give her the opportunity to make comments. And her only question is, she wanted to make sure that she had the annual information for 2017, which I'll give her separately. But there was no comment, so the rate increases were approved as were noticed in the paper. So they'll be going into, we just had a meeting with Connected Water Company, so our monthly billing will begin, the new rate will be in December, and the quarterly billing will be in January.
And I know you told us before, but maybe tell us again, because I believe probably every one of us sitting up here will get some questions. So just give us the answers. So just in thumbnail sketch, why?
Why?
Yes, okay. I mean, I understand why.
These two gentlemen know better than I do, actually. But for eight years, we have not changed the water rate. So I can't think of anything that hasn't changed in eight years in terms of water, particularly the cost. So that was very essential. And in fact, I was just writing to the gentleman from New Britain, the New Britain Herald, that the fact is that we've done quite a few projects since I've been here. We've done the painting of our storage tank, which is over $300,000. We have now an MDC connection, which is $350,000, which is now a viable connection. And we've done some additional work at our treatment plant, which we, at the Elton Road, we're putting in a generator, which we haven't had before, which means it operates under conditions of no power. And then we also have a, we upgraded and have put in a new well. So we're back in, up to snuff in terms of our usage for the water supply. And we had, and as you know, we brought up quite a few projects that we still have pending. We're completing a sewer project for Belchewbrook. It's nearly complete. We met this afternoon. The contractor, Michaels, has been very good. They should be completing their project next week. And they're going to come back in spring and do a lot of the lawns. They're going to take care of everything. They've been very good throughout the entire process, and we should complete that project in the spring. And I've already got the East Berlin Fire District, I mentioned to you last time, that we have main breaks. I've already talked to Marion, because Marion had some areas, but they've done some relining of water lines, went over there on a Saturday morning and looked at it, and I can see why it's more complicated than sewer line proposal. We're going to be looking at relining some area in East Berlin where it needs it very badly. I think that's a thumbnail sketch.
Yeah, so they're just the eight years, the main projects, obviously.
And the biggest problem, and I think I can tell the individual, is the upgrades that we've had for the sewer projects were based on manateas increases because over the year, they had $110 million upgrade at their facility, which we were kind of hostage to. Whenever they went up, we had to go up as well.
Right. That's fair. I appreciate the info. Any other questions?
Thanks, Ray.
Well, just one comment I would raise here. At their last meeting, we talked about having a joint meeting between the town council, the Berlin Water Commission, and the two water districts. We talked about looking at trying to get that scheduled. We already had, as you know, we've started some, these quarterly meetings with the districts. Our first one's scheduled for January 3rd, I believe. And instead of trying to schedule all of you during the holiday season, since that's already scheduled, I told the mayor what I would do is I would just say we should, we should just use that meeting as the joint meeting, if that's acceptable.
Is it Thursday?
Yeah, normally we meet on Thursdays.
What time?
I believe it's six o'clock, Ray, or five.
Whatever you want.
I think it's at six. I can get that.
I think typically it was six o'clock in the last.
I think people work, so I think we normally have it six o'clock.
Can you make sure any email?
I will confirm that with everything.
We would also like to include, if we could, the actual commissioners from the Berlin Water Control Commission.
Sure.
Extend that.
Well, the mayor.
Yeah.
Location?
Well, right now, we normally have the town managers conference room. I think this is getting a little big for that. I'll find another location.
Just while we're on the water districts, just, there was some comment tonight about the Kensington Fire District wanting, wanting to take over the Berlin Water Control. I'm just curious, did that come from the Kensington Fire District?
I'm sorry?
Our chairman of the Board of Finance said tonight that the Kensington Fire District would happily take over the Berlin Water Control Commission. Did that come from the Kensington Fire District?
I don't know.
Have you heard that anywhere?
I believe.
Right?
He's heard that.
That, so the gentleman from the New Britain Herald mentioned it to me, that that was mentioned by, on the subject earlier.
Right, but, so Kensington did say that, that they would like to take over.
I think the wording was that they were happy with the consolidation, but they preferred it to be under them, so.
No, he is part of the Bristol Water Department, the Kensington, or the where they.
I don't know at the time. I didn't see what chat he had on at the time, so.
Okay. There's certain charter requirements for the Berlin Water Company, and Ray and I also have been working with the State Water Utility Control Commission to make sure that we acquire the exclusive rights for, as exclusive water than any portion of the town.
Right, you're right.
I think there's, there's a lot of information that needs to be gleaned.
This sounds like.
Ray has put together some very good information that we will be sharing with you shortly.
Great. Well, we really appreciate that, because it's probably a mess that should have been cleaned up many, many, many years ago, so.
Very hard.
Right, hopefully we can start at least working on it, maybe get to some conclusion down the road. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray. Thanks for your work.
You should have some information about Project Hope on your decision.
Yes, yes.
Karen and I attended the, along with Chief Klepp, attended the press conference yesterday on that, and so I felt that it was something you would want to see the information on.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a wonderful program, and it's so nice to be there. I was really proud to be there, so.
I know the chief was, he was excited about it.
Yes.
Okay, also, just so you know, that there is an ethics committee, commission meeting, Board of Ethics, excuse me, meeting on Thursday. We're meeting with them to discuss the ethics policy and how it pertains to the police department. The police have their own ethics policy, and they feel that they shouldn't be subjected to two because there's some conflict between the two. And the, and the police ethics policy is, and is much more strict and stringent than, than the one that we have for the town. Interestingly, our ethics policy is taking after the one in New Britain. And so Chief talked to the New Britain Police Department, and they don't sign the one in New Britain. They have the, they sign the one for the police department. We're going to have, so we're going to have a meeting on Thursday to see if we can work this out. Okay. There's some questions recently about the Knights of Columbus building. It is being, there has been some vandalism there. I have authorized the facilities department to go up and secure, make sure that it's secure. I've had some, I have in the last few weeks had some correspondence with Joe Bajarski about that. And without going through this whole long email, which I can forward to you if you would like, the previous type of funding they had is no longer available to them, in a nutshell. And again, I can forward you this email.
Send it, yeah, send it out to.
I'll send it to everybody. And I think instead of me trying to read and explain to you, it'll be self-explanatory. I will say that, and I did tell you this before, I am regularly meeting on every other week basis at the Senior Center. I go over there for coffee, for lunch, it's in Tocco. And while the Senior Center is important to them, the Senior, the new Senior Center project, another thing that's really foremost on mine is senior housing. They, they've, a lot of them are very concerned that, you know, they're getting older, they're in houses that they're not sure that, either they can't afford, they can maintain. They would be very interested in town providing or making accessible to them additional senior housing. So I've been going back and forth with Joe, and we're going to see if we can, you know, he's got some information here, and see if we can go forward and get some additional senior housing. I have nothing planned, you know, it's very, just right now, it's just a conversation stage, and I think that you, I think you've all heard it, if you're aware, that they are concerned about that.
I mean, the information, some of the information, then, unfortunately, the financing stuff changed with, I think it comes from federal government down to the state, is disturbing because our plans really, you know, it doesn't fit what we hope to do for seniors. Unfortunately, the financing is now an issue, right? So we've got to figure out a way to, to do that. It's just very, very, it's going to be very difficult when you, when you read it. You know, it's been, and you know, unfortunately, the holdup with the land, the easement, in the meantime, some of the financing options changed, right? Mr. Donofeu, do you know much about, have you been familiar with what has changed with that area?
We were very, very, very actively involved.
Yeah.
And then a year ago, everything came to a screeching halt.
It did, I know. I know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's just not good for what we hope to accomplish, you know, here in Berlin at least. And it's kind of grim, really. I mean, it's not good. So, I mean, hopefully there's a way around everything, and I hope we can move forward with that. But we've got this property, we've got the design, we've got the two buildings, all this stuff we want to do, and it's all great, but somebody has to pay for it now, and, you know, to get that financing is very, very much of a problem. So hopefully we can figure out something. Anyway, thank you.
The last thing I did have, and I was going, I think someone was talking about public comment, but we've gotten, all of a sudden, even in the last couple days, we've gotten several calls on Christmas lights, that we don't put up a lot of Christmas lights in town. I went down and talked to, why didn't I, we talked to the.
That the town doesn't?
Yeah, the town doesn't.
I thought people complained about Christmas lights. Oh, my God, I thought we headed down that road, yeah.
The town doesn't put up enough Christmas lights. And my only comment to you is, you know, that we've been taking the calls, and we're telling them we're going to look at it. I have talked to a couple of the towns, and most towns don't really pay for them. They get private people to pay for those. But if it's something that, that the council or somebody wants to address for next year, I think we need to talk about it during the budget season and put that in for it.
I think we need to call some sponsors, but.
Do we have to stand those flags to firm it?
Oh, for like Memorial Day and stuff? That? I mean, yeah, we did. We did have those. I mean, we decorate, obviously, we have the.
Quite a bunch of them.
We have the vitamins park, right, with the Christmas tree lighting we did. And then we do, don't we do something by the gazebo, by.
Yeah, that great farmage you have, like the poles?
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what they're.
The pole stuff.
Like the street, I mean.
Yeah.
Those kind of merchants would look nice.
Chamber pays for it, maybe, or something?
We used to have the, they were, weren't like flags, that they were more like little banners on it.
Oh, yeah.
And I know Junior's bought a whole bunch of them, and.
Well, we had the for service flags, Army, Navy, Marine.
Yeah.
And.
I mean, it would be lovely to see.
It would look nice.
Let's get the merchants to sponsor it.
That's the thing, I think it would.
You know, we need a rich benefactor, so that.
Or even if each merchant picked.
Paid, right, right.
You know, sponsored it.
Yeah.
And they could be, you know, it don't have to be Christmas.
Yeah, it could be multi-holiday, yeah.
We're.
Seasons greetings, whatever, yeah. Well, maybe we can.
That'd be cool. It'd be a great project. Where's Chris Edge?
I'll give Chris a note tomorrow. I'll give, I'll give Chris a call tomorrow.
Okay.
He'll be glad to look into it. And I think that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, special committee reports, have we had any meetings? Oh, these are the, calendar, new calendar. And I don't think we've had any of, what do we, ordinance committee, are we gonna, what are we gonna do with ordinance committee, Jeff?
The ordinance committee, we talked about having that, probably will be after the first of the year.
After the first of the year.
Again, I just, the holiday season, I just to try and...
It is a puns.
Trying to, normally trying to sketch something in the month of December is problematic.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So, with the calendar, it's a committee of one. I just tried to mirror what we did last year, and I tried to look at the finance board and put some notes in there, in their calendar, tried to notice the school breaks, so if anybody sees anything that sticks out. Kate had some suggestions, and maybe just send out an email, make a vote on it, push it forward next time.
Did a great job on this calendar, thank you, Ray.
That's hell of a job. Would you, would you congratulate the committee, for me, on, on, all this hard work?
Does she like the track colors?
Yeah, that's fancy, yeah, wow, that's really, that's really impressive.
I just want to ask some questions. Do we have a meeting next week?
No.
No.
You only have one more meeting.
One more, in December 17th, or 18th?
18.
18.
Oh, so there is no meeting next week?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no. One, one in December, so, I know we all have a lot of different functions.
Thank you.
We're excited about that, too.
Everybody's, everybody's excited.
I kept it the same way, you just stuck one...
We might all agree on that point, right? Everything's good on that. So, you guys want to look at this now, you good, you want to look at it until the next time, whatever you guys want?
Can we have time?
Hold on, next week. Hold on, next time, put it on the agenda next right time, right? We've got it.
Okay, it's all right.
Okay, good. Special committees, what, any more special committees? No, it's council communications.
Is there any way to compare what it costs us borrowing to the health district as opposed to hiring our own health inspector?
They could probably get some, some information from CCM.
Because I, I was talking to a counselor from, an ex-counselor from, he said that I don't have any experience for sure, but the word I was given is a dislease, it's a million dollars over 10 years, and we're going to be sharing, part of that office. We have to have a public hearing for this $1,000, and we're permitted to spend a portion of a million dollars on this deal. I just want to make sure it's the best value for our town.
Well, one of the things that we, that we had asked when, when this process started was that, that there would not be an increase in cost to, to, to residents, you know, to the towns. They're, you know, I, they're charging $6 per cap, and now we can find out what other towns charge. I will tell you that, and again, I, I come from an area, you know, I've worked with other, the health district in Torrington, and that one has 21 towns, I believe. It's like, it didn't spend around, I probably was working with it back in the early 80s, and it, it services out of one, one office in, in Torrington, it's central to the whole world, and it works very well.
That may be the case, I just want to make sure we're...
We can get you some care, what I would say, Charlie, let us get you some comparison prices, and then you can take a look at what, you know, how this will compare to other ones.
It costs a lot, like, I get involved with health departments doing onsite sewer disposing. Well, if I'm working in Farmington, I have to add $200 to any job, because it takes me an hour to drive it back and forth to their central office, and I got charged for that time. So, everybody I work for here costs them actually $200 bucks, you know, and that's going to happen in Birlin now, anybody pulling a permanent bill, that's going to happen, Birlin's going to have to add a couple hours to their bill. I just want to look at everything to make sure our citizens, you get good service and good value.
One of the, one of the, I don't know if you, if you remember last year during the budget season at the state, there was a, there was a proposal at the state level to, to further consolidate the health service to the, to the state, they're like, I don't remember the number, so don't quote me, it was eight or something. I remember for the town negotiation, they paid $15,000 now as a fee to, for their, for their health district. It was going to go to $150,000.
Ours was going to go away.
Oh, it was off, I just remember that particular one, and so there was some concern about that, so, you know, there was, there was a lot of pushback at the, at the town level about...
I just want to make sure...
Consolidation.
Yeah, consolidation would have been a financial nightmare for us, I just want to make sure we're not...
Second of the...
Many more.
And we'll get you, before next meeting, we'll get you some comparisons on that.
Thank you.
Counselor communication?
Yes, that's where we're at.
Birlin has defeated Brookfield 60 to 6.
Nice.
Nice.
Very good, very good.
Goodness.
Congratulations to them.
That's phenomenal. I just, what I want to mention, you got, he'll give an email, just the BNA, because that had come up at some point from the Board of Finance about defunding them, I guess, so you see Mr. Dinafrial's communication, that we cannot do that, it's in the charter. So, again, you know, thank goodness for the charter, and some legal advice, because it, I'm sorry, but, you know, I'm really fed up with the Board of Finance, I think that was pretty obvious tonight, but I don't know what to do anymore with them, because quite frankly, I don't see them cooperating with us one single bit, and I, I don't, I don't know, I'm open to whatever you guys think, if you have...
Charter change.
Well, hey, I'm all for it, but, you know, it's, it's just, you know, that's another year away, but I don't know, I mean, I don't understand...
You don't, you don't start now, you got to put in the budget.
Yeah, that's fine, but, you know, if you, yeah, I mean, I guess we still have a budget here to get through, but I, I don't even know where to begin, I mean, just, you know, look at the BNA thing, oh, we're going to defund it, well, you can't do that, look at this, you can't, I mean, I don't know how many conversations that I've had personally with the chairman about things, and I said, you can't do that, because it's charter, because it's this, it's that, and they just seem to go on and on, and I, I don't know what to do, I mean, we're facing a budget season.
Who can, who can help? Couldn't we have that joint meeting we've been talking about, could we schedule that?
Oh, my God, we've had many joint meetings, and it's the same.
I listened last year, so I don't know.
You missed it, you missed it, Charlie, look at you, but we've been through this, and I, I fear in January, we will go through it one, one more time, and maybe many more times for the town, but I don't know where to go with it anymore, because I don't know, I just, we should be working together, there's, I always envisioned it that, you know, they were our financial advisors, they would spend the whole year looking at things like consolidation, like the BNA, like whatever, and coming up with some maybe solution, maybe not, but giving, you know, advice to the council, advice to other town departments, and then we, you know, go forward and try and make some decisions, but it just doesn't seem to ever get there. And they keep wanting advice from us, I mean, they're supposed to give advice to us, is why I understand Board of Finance, I've looked in other towns, I've talked to other towns about it. Every town I've spoken to myself said it's, what you're describing to me, Mark, is the reverse of how it works everywhere else. So, I'm exceedingly frustrated.
There's obviously something very, very wrong.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's apparent to me that there's got to be, you know, a dysfunctional dynamic within the Board of Finance.
I think you're right.
If they're not able to present what we should be...
Right?
Being presented with.
No, I think it's their problem.